We're having some technical difficulties with Brandon's computer.
Okay.
We're getting that set up.
Okay, we can wait a minute then.
Yes, we're ready.
Okay, great. All right, I will call to order the planning commission hearing for Wednesday, April 1st, 2020. It is 6:03 PM. We only have two items on the agenda this evening. Both of them are legislative, so we will be making a recommendation to municipal council on each of these two items. I'll ask the commissioners to start off with roll call, beginning with Mr. Howard, please. And please state if you have any conflicts with the items tonight.
Andrew Howard, no conflicts.
Laurie Urquaga, no conflicts.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Robert Knudsen, no conflicts.
Great, and Debra Jensen, no conflicts. Thank you. Because we're doing an electronic meeting, this is our second time on this. We are going to do it a little bit differently tonight for public participation. For those members of the public who are listening, to participate in the public comment of the meeting, please dial 669-219-2599. Enter meeting ID. We're doing an electronic. Sorry, enter meeting ID 393-441-160 and press pound. When asked for a participant ID, press pound again. Be sure to mute or silence any external audio on your end to reduce feedback. If you're viewing the live proceedings on YouTube, mute the YouTube video. You will be able to hear the meeting audio through the phone while you're on the line. Press star nine from your phone to indicate that you would like to speak. When you are invited to speak, the planning secretary will grant you speaking permission, calling on you by the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by stating your first and last name and city of residence for the record. I know those are a lot of explanations. I'll read them again when we get to the public hearing portion for each item. And again, you can also participate by typing comments during the YouTube livestream, and staff will read those aloud when we get to the public comment portion of the hearing. All right, so with those housekeeping items squared away, I'll read in item one. Item one, Provo City Council Office requests an ordinance amendment to establish the Critical Hillside, or CH, overlay zone, to provide development standards to help protect the sensitive hillside areas of Provo City's east bench. This has citywide impact, and Brandon Larson will present item one. Mr. Larson with us? Looks like we're still getting some things organized on that end. We'll hold on for a minute here.
There's definitely a learning curve to this.
Sometimes. Technology's great when it works.
We're checking on Brandon to see what is to hold up, so just give us a couple of minutes.
Great, thank you.
This one, okay. I think I did, let's see, it seem like I, oh. That should be.
Okay, hold on. Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, excellent, we just had the wrong microphone selected. Sorry about that. Brandon Larson, Development Services Staff. I'll be presenting both items tonight. The city council tasked us with the assignment to propose some hillside ordinances for the east bench of Provo City. And that's what we are bringing forward to you tonight, along with the zone map amendment that we'll talk about a little later. So I'm gonna get down here to a couple talking points. So I guess first of all, the first thing I'd point out is this critical hillside overlay zone is an overlay zone, so it's not a standalone zone. It overlays the existing zones in the city. So it's additional requirements that would be put upon the applicable properties that we'll talk about later tonight. When the city council tasked us with this responsibility, they pointed to Salt Lake County's foothills, canyons, and overlay zone, and wanted us to look at that as an example. And so we looked at that and found it to be a helpful resource that we consulted in preparing the document. I do want to say that with this proposal, we're not. The proposal isn't to preclude development in the CH zone. It's to help preserve the beauty of the foothills and to guide development, those who choose to propose development in that area, to guide them to help bring forward a more aesthetically pleasing product that fits in with the environment. So I want to go through, I'm just gonna talk through some of the main points of the requirements, and then we can maybe dive into the language. So again, I think I've stated this, the objective is to protect the hillsides of the east bench and establish prudent development standards for those areas, sorry, those areas in the zone. The permitted uses in that zone are those of the underlying zone. One of the first things you come to after you kind of get through, when you get to the meat of this proposal, you come to a section about limits of disturbance. What that basically means is we're proposing that a developer, whether it's a single lot or a subdivider, that they identify the areas of the property that are going to be developed. And so that's the area where you could, you have more flexibility in clearing some vegetation. Your buildings are gonna be in that area. You can't have any more than 40% of your lot, of a lot, in the limits of disturbance. I'm sorry, got a kind of a quick trigger here. Next, I'll go to slope protection requirements. With, this proposal was meant to work with some of the other provisions, particularly in Title 15 related to sensitive lands and slope requirements. Some of their development standards in Title 15, one of the important considerations in Title 15 is related to limiting development on slopes that are greater than 30%. And so this proposal underscores that point, that development on slopes greater than 30% is, for the most part, not desirable. It says here that property that on 30% slopes with a few exceptions would either remain in natural, private or natural public open space. One of the important things, and I think the city council really kind of hit this home in one of the last meetings we had with them, or at least the foothill committee, which is made up of, which includes a few members of the city council. They want provisions, or are interested in considering provisions, that would set development off ridge lines. And another thing I would point out in the slope protections is retaining walls. The intent there is to have retaining walls blend with the natural landscape. Originally, we had included some height and wall limitations. We took those out at the request of the Public Works Department to try to be a bit more flexible in working with potential projects. Detention basins, I think it's a good example of what we're trying to accomplish overall in this ordinance, and that's to try to have development match natural surroundings. So drainage detention basins, instead of having, you know, the big bowl soccer field type look, we're proposing that drainage basins have a natural look and feel to them. We've talked about ridge lines. Streets would follow natural contours. Density bonuses included in these provisions for trailhead and trail and trailhead dedication. Right now, we've proposed a limit to 10% bonus density. And so that's. I know that, and I guess part of the reason I put a limit or proposed a limit at 10 was because of feedback from some who suggested this isn't an area where we want to encourage dense, you know, dense development.
Could you elaborate on what a density bonus is?
It basically would be just, it would be an enrichment of the development possible potential there. So if, you know, if somebody proposed 100 lots, and they put 10%, say they proposed a development that included 10% of that 100 lot, actually be 100 acre development. If they had a 100 acre development, and then they, 10 acres of that 100 acres was put into a trail, they would get a 10% bonus. Whatever the allowed density was in that zone, they could times it by 110% basically. Or they'd get a 10% bonus, so.
Okay, so it's a reward for developing trailhead.
Right, exactly. They give the city, give them an increased public benefit, and they get an increased density, or they have increased density potential in their development.
Thank you.
Yeah. Tree and vegetation protections, where I'm going next. This is, there's a lot to this section, but one of the important things in there is the preservation of trees. There's a definition for significant trees. It includes large trees as defined in the ordinance, and also groups of smaller trees. This section really tries to embrace some of the, tries to include the requirements or cite the requirements of the urban interface, or kind of tries to bring those in into play. To, as we talk about a foothill area, there's, you know, it's an area that could have a lot of vegetation, fire hazards. And so we definitely want to consider the urban wildland interface, which is a collection of fire requirements for hillside type areas and wild areas, particularly where the urban and forest meet. With this section, the tree and vegetation section, there are two important documents there. One's called the Vegetation Tree Establishment and Land Reclamation Plan. That plan, that plan is, the intention is, is to ensure that a property is revegetated after it's been disturbed, that it's, that slopes are revegetated. I think, I know there's a provision in there that even considers deep rooted plants to help slope stability. Another important document would be the Tree and Vegetation Protection Plan. Before someone begins a development project, they would have to establish and identify those vegetation trees that would be protected during the development process. And then one of the last things I'll highlight before we dive into the language is just design standards. Design standards, I think one of the intents, like I've said before, is to try to have the development in the hillside area blend in with the natural environment. And so buildings, we propose to be, to follow, to be designed to follow natural contours and to blend with the natural setting. Landscaping would also incorporate, would incorporate natural features. And then a couple of other points I'd hit home would be like parking and utilities would be screened to blend in with the environment. So at that point, that's my brief introduction to the ordinance. And I've got the ordinance up here on slides, and we can just go through it or do whatever you want at this point, so.
I think it's probably going to be useful to go through it. We don't have to go through it in tremendous detail, but I think everyone's had an opportunity to review it prior to the hearing, perhaps make some notes, and maybe has a few ideas about the comments that they'd like to see addressed.
I guess one question I have is, would you prefer to see it like this format? Or would you prefer to see it, is that more clear if I put it up that way?
Maybe page by page.
Let's see if I can do that.
Under definitions.
Okay.
Shouldn't this, we just talked about with Andrew.
Okay.
Bonus points or density bonus be part of the definitions?
Yeah, we can certainly add a definition for density bonus. I don't think that hurts to add some clarification there.
Thank you.
That's a good point.
If you don't mind, I think I'm just gonna put a, insert a comment right here.
I'm just going to ask, before we get really into the meat of this, did we have anyone here from the council office that wanted to speak to us this evening? As the applicant?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Also, before Brandon gets into the meat of this, perhaps it would be worthwhile to point out that as you look at the entire ordinance, what we're really talking about is aesthetic regulations. We're trying to limit the aesthetic impact and also the physical impact of hillside development. And hard engineering standards having to do with roads, slopes, and those types of things, those are all contained in our Sensitive Land Section of 1505.
That's good.
So it was never intended that this repeats a lot of those engineering type standards. Those are covered in other sections of our code. Okay?
Great, that's an excellent point.
Question. Some of the requirements in here make things that have previously been done on large scale technically illegal. So, for example, the, let's see, 1433A110. Five, so this is page nine of the staff report. It says retaining walls shall be faced with stone or earth colored materials similar to the surrounding natural landscape. There are lots of areas in the city that have gigantic concrete training walls. You know, they're nice looking brick, but they're definitely concrete. Is that something in this definition that's no longer allowed? And if so, it's just too bad, somebody else got to do it and you can't?
No, I don't, I saw your comments, and I appreciated your comments. This one, I looked at that wall on 4800 North and University, and I think based on what I saw, that is. And I, I think, uh, based on what I saw, that this, it, it seems like it would definitely fit within this provision. It says, uh, stone or earth colored materials similar to the surrounding natural landscape. You can see the example on the, um, in the text and also that 4800, uh, north example, both blend into the natural environment. I think the, that I would wager the blocks here in the example that you can see there is, is some type of, uh, cement or,
Okay.
Some type of block, so no, I don't.
The difference being the, the fact that you can't, if I seem to remember that there was something about no more than four feet tall. So you couldn't have a big giant sheer face like that when you would have to break it up in terraces, is that correct?
I, so.
The H overlay?
If, if you looked at the, the, uh, most updated ordinance, I think even the staff report even had, I think an, an earlier, uh, version of the ordinance did have some height and, and retaining wall number limitations. Those were removed, uh, to, to not curtail or to, to add some flexibility in, 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 uh, constructing retaining walls.
So how would we, how would we prevent somebody from interpreting it so that they built a 50 foot tall retaining wall like that one on 4800 North?
Um, I think that we would, uh, so, so again, this is aesthetics. If I were, we, we would rely on the provisions of Title 15 and also of the building code uh, to, uh, to limit those types of things. I, I'm not, uh, again, we chose to, to not place a limit on those and rely on the building code and, and the, the engineering standards and, and provisions in Title 15.
Do you feel like there's enough review then that something like that couldn't happen in a higher situation?
Uh, you know what, I, I haven't reviewed the building code or the, or the Title 15 provisions, uh, related to retaining walls. So I don't know that I can, can honestly answer that.
Okay. I just always worry about how someone else will interpret it. I love the pictures, but even the pictures weren't super clear to me as far as what kind of, you know, for example, in this situation, what kind of brick would be acceptable or rock would be acceptable. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I guess I'll add that my read of that section on retaining walls, really what came across to me going through that was that, uh, besides the materials that are required, that you were requiring terracing with landscaping material so that you don't have a sheer wall, but you have a step back situation with live planning materials. Is, is that correct?
That's absolutely correct. Subsection A hits that home pretty well. Terraces are created between retaining walls. And I, I also like the, that, that, that next portion of it that talks about having to landscape and revegetate uh, in, in between. So, um, we, so you, the idea that you would retain and, and, and revegetate, I think that's an important part of this.
Okay. Do, do we want to just go through it in order?
Uh, sure.
So we don't miss anything? Anything else on definitions, commissioners?
There was a question about the stream corridors that was in some of the public, um, information. I'm wondering if that question that was, um, brought up by the public about, um, like, does that cover intermittent streams? Is.
Point, yeah.
Part of it?
You know what, that's, uh, that's a good question. Um, my intention was, was to cover those types of, uh, I guess you'd call them ephemeral streams. That, that was definitely my point, but you bring up a, you bring up the fact that perhaps we need to beef that definition up to, to make sure that it's clear that they cover those types of streams and drainages.
I think that would be helpful.
I, I agree. I see your point.
Madam Chair, uh, before we go on, and I think we should review the document, uh, essentially block paragraph or however they want to do it. Uh, my question is, we used, apparently we used, uh, Salt Lake County's as a template, uh, which is probably a good idea. What, what changes from that template were made to this draft, pro or con or up or down? How would you couch it?
Well, that's a good question. I didn't just merely, uh, use Salt Lake County as a, as a template. I definitely leaned on it pretty heavily, but, um, I, I also looked at Park City because frankly, Salt Lake County, Salt Lake County's ordinance evolved from Park City's ordinance as a, as, when I started diving into it. Um, I also looked at, Pace and City had, had looked at, had used some of the FCA's provisions. And so I looked at them and even looked at some provisions from Sandy and Springville as well. So, um, this is, uh, what I, I did was, uh, we've had lots of meetings with the, the, I started with a document that was definitely, and, and definitely influenced by the, those other jurisdictions, particularly the FCA's. But then, as I met with the city council, they, uh, not the city council, the foothill committee, they, they gave us some guidance and that helped to kind of, uh, steer the language in certain directions as well as meeting, uh, with the Public Works Department and gaining feedback from other, uh, other, um, city departments. Uh, for instance, like the FCA's, um, we, we, I, I do not recall exactly what is in the FCA's related to trails, but I know that I followed more of a, more of a, more of a, uh, tried to follow more of, more of the, what, what I saw from Springville City. Um, I thought, my idea with trails was to kind of try to, to give the, an incentive, to, to propose an incentive to developers to provide some more public, uh, benefits like trails and trailheads. So I think that was kind of, uh, an example of deviating from that FCA's. The, so slopes and, uh, slope protections and streets. Um, I started out with a lot of, uh, provisions that were similar to what was in the FCA's, but as we talked with Public Works, those were more tailored towards Provo city concerns. Uh, especially, um, as I noted earlier, the 30 development on, uh, on anything greater than 30% slopes is a pretty, uh, important, uh, principle here in the city. And so that, that was, uh, definitely hit home in, in that slope section. Um, so I, I think those are, are an example of, that's, those are some things that were definitely, uh, tailored for Provo city. As I'm going, Phil, just quickly go through the ordinance here and, uh.
Who sits on the, sorry, one more question. Who sits on the foothill committee?
Um, you, you have, uh, Ms. Councilman Fillmore, Councilman Sewell, and, and, and Chairman Hanley.
Thank you.
And engineering staff, planning staff, city council staff.
Thank you very much.
Uh, the tree and vegetation section, um, those two documents that I referred to earlier, the revegetation tree establishment and land reclamation plan, I really kind of got the idea. The idea came from the FCA's, but I really, uh, really, um, I would say built upon that quite a bit. That was, uh, those documents were, 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 um, definitely accrue, I think evolved pretty, that, that was, yes, I got the idea from the FCA's, but those were more of a creation of mine, I would say. Sensitive lands, stream corridors were pretty close to the FCA's. Design standards were similar, same as, same with clustering. Uh, some of the parking standards, um, especially for snow load, actually came from a, a document. I found, found a very helpful document in designing, uh, parking lots in relation to snow, uh, snow storage uh, from actually the, uh, I think it was a government entity in the, in the Lake Tahoe region, actually. So, um, that's kind of, uh, I guess a, a brief overview of kind of deviations from the FCA's.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions on this section before we go on to, uh, the first chapter? Or I guess that would be the second chapter.
Um, I have a question.
Ms. Wenden?
Um, I had a question about, uh, when you talk about all disturbed areas needing to be revegetated. And you mentioned that a, um, a five foot wide perimeter around the edge of all structures, uh, can be revegetated using non-native or non-water wise adapted plant species. That part isn't my question. Um, but in reflecting back upon, you know, the last five or so years, um, Utah counties had several significant fires that have gotten precariously home, close to homes. And I was just wondering if a five foot wide perimeter, uh, is enough to establish a good, um, fire retardant, given that they're gonna be building up in the foothills. Uh, did you find anything in your research that, that that's a, uh, good enough setback as far as trees and vegetation is concerned?
That's really not. That's not, that's not sufficient for that, uh, concern you've got. There's another, uh, there are, uh, other regulations called the urban wildland interface, uh, that fire departments use that talk about keeping vegetation back from homes, clear areas around homes, those types of things, just for that exact reason, Ms. Wenden, and, uh, uh, those regulations would prevail.
Right. That five foot perimeter you speak of was actually an allowance for flowers to be planted around the home um, that, that weren't drought, drought tolerant type of, uh, plants. Um, most, a lot of people enjoy planting, uh, flowers close to their home and so that's what that provision was. Councilman Fillmore expressed a desire to allow a, a limited allowance for, for planting, uh, flowers and, and plants that were, were, were not drought tolerant to, so that they could have a similar benefit to a lot of other property owners in the city and, and.
Sure, my question, yeah, it didn't have anything to do with the, you know, the types of vegetation. I'm certainly happy to allow them to, you know, have flowers and such. My concern was just more, uh.
Wildfire.
It's, yeah, exactly.
Right. Which, what, yeah, again, will be, uh, would be addressed more so in the urban wildland interface and, and by the, the fire marshal during his review.
Okay, and he hasn't reviewed this yet?
Uh, he has, he has, yeah.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you.
Is that a different area of the code that has that, um, urban wildlife setback?
Yes.
Okay. Um, would it be helpful to say that this is not to be confused with that?
Correct. Yes.
I'm, I'm just wondering if putting into the language of the.
Oh, no, I don't think that makes any difference because that ordinance is gonna be, that ordinance is gonna prevail.
Okay.
That ordinance goes way beyond this five foot strip around a house.
And it actually is, uh, it's state code. Uh, I believe the urban wildliner interface comes to us from the state.
Okay.
Great. All right, are we ready to jump into the meat of the overlay zone? Let's do it.
As we go through, um, there are a couple places where it says that the information in this document does not conflict with the information in, um, chapter 15. I'd kind of be interested in a little bit more detail on how those interact with each other. Um, where this one says something's not allowed, but it doesn't stop anything from 15. I'm kind of wondering why if 15 allows it, we say it's not here.
David Day, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, I think what, what we had decided was to just point to ordinances that already cup areas and, and not reiterate those same ordinances over again.
Okay, I, I understand that part. I'm just wanting to make sure it, it sort of sounds like this contradicts, but that overrules, um, the way it was phrased a couple times in this document.
Okay, so the, the point there was, uh, so I guess the first idea is, is that these document, this, this document is supposed to work together with Title 15. Um, this is aesthetic in nature, uh, and also trying to protect, uh, the, the, you know, not the appearance and the ecology of, of the foothills. The idea was, is that in the event that, that somehow the provisions of Title 15, um, work to, to, if, if there was any chance that the, that the provisions of this title, this, uh, chapter would be overridden by the, by ti- the provisions of Title 15, we wanted this section to prevail. That, that was the intent.
Okay. As we get to him, if it seems to me that that doesn't make sense, I'll point it out.
Thank you.
All right, we'll take the lead from you, Mr. Larson.
Okay, um, I can get into this as much as you want or, or would you prefer to just go down through and have, uh, have you ask questions on the particular sections? I, we've, we've gone through the, we've talked about the definitions. I, I guess I would almost prefer to have you just ask questions, uh, unless you want me to go through this line by line.
I think everyone's had a chance to go through it, um, and probably has a list of questions. So unless anybody objects to that, we can start discussing that we have questions on. Question, Mr. Howard?
No, you, you caught me. I, I do have a few. Um, hopefully they're good ones, but we'll see. Uh, could you elaborate on the definition of ridge lines? And, and, um, to me, a lot of what's in here centers on that very issue. Uh, mainly because of where I grew up and how I grew up. I live on, uh, a Provo bench. Uh, would that be a ridge line or is, could you define it? Could you describe it? And, and does a ridge line go up to the Provo city limit to the forest boundary?
A ridge line, um, if you look at the definition, is the, is a connecting point. It, it, it's a line connecting the highest points along a ridge that separate drainages. So it would, it would have, so basically you have, uh, high points on the mountain. And as they run, if you take a line running up that, uh.
For, for example?
Highest points along that drainage base and that would be the ridge.
It is.
Does it include bench? Say that again?
Does that definition include a bench?
Like Osman Lane, is that, would Osman Lane be considered a ridge line?
That's a very good question. Um, I'll be honest with you. Staff has not evaluated the topography of the hillside. The, the intent was, was not to identify ridge lines tonight. Uh, that, that was, if you look in the definition or the, the language further on, it, it says that would occur at, at a, at the rezoning of a property. Uh, I, I certainly have had no time to, to evaluate ridge lines in the, in the foothill areas.
Well, this is a very complicated, uh, discussion we're having. And I, I actually, it's a step in the right direction. One of my concerns right up front is would we preclude, uh, such a development such as, uh, Stephen Covey's house or Osman Lane or anything like that? Because, you know, those things have been around for a long time and, um, they've been nicely done.
Correct. Um, the, the ridge line requirement, uh, again, would be addressed at the, at the zone, zone map amendment stage. If someone were to come in and, uh, there, there was an evaluation of the property according to this provision. If, if it was found that they. if it was found that they they were proposing development within one hundred feet of the ridge line, they they would not be, they would have to set that development off that ridge line.
My understanding of public input we have received would be that the definition should include benches, because I think what we're hearing from the public is they don't want to see that house right on, right on a bench, right on the edge of the bench. They want to push back
Sure.
the edge of the bench.
And I, and I, that's how I interpreted some of these letters and and uh just want to be clear, I I have feelings on both sides of the issue.
Right.
Um but uh if you're a property owner and you want to put up a, that's that's where Stephen Covey wants to build his house. And so Ro- Robert Radford, are we gonna say, sorry, Rob, you gotta, you gotta go up in the mountains? Right, anyway, go on.
Um that's, I think I've explained the the ridge line. Yeah, we we have not evaluated them. That's the the uh ridge line was was meant to talk about high points going up the mountainside. Benches uh were uh benches could, we we could address benches uh if if you'd like to in that section or in that definition.
Well, I, you know, the thing that's causing me, because this this whole thing came up because of that one development that was presented to us. And, you know, there are pros and cons to everything, and uh the the ground that they want to uh develop is is relatively flat. And if you've walked that ground, um you know, I'm just wondering what kind of impact this overlay would have on such a development, because, you know, uh I see a lot of good things happening, but but we, are we in a sense shutting down potential development from some prominent Provoans or even non-prominent Provoans that have held the land that want to develop it? And I I just have some uh concerns about how how tight we we term this.
Right. I I I think that again, the challenge is staff has has not had the opportunity to evaluate ridge lines in in the city. It was not uh our intent to address specific ridge lines uh through this process.
Sure.
Um and I and I see your point that that that's a challenge too, because we want to make sure that we develop an ordinance that that uh you know, we, I, at at no point are we trying to say that the ri- the development's not not allowed in this area. We're just trying to to make it aesthetically pleasing and ecologically sound, so.
Sure.
Also, just would like to clarify one thing you said there, Andrew, and that is that uh, Mr. Howard, is the genesis of this ordinance was uh excavation of a gravel pit in the mouth of the canyon. This was not because of any development proposal.
Oh, thank you. No, that makes sense.
Yeah, I have a question about ridge lines since we're on that already. Is that okay?
Sure.
Um, on, it says no development. I don't know if I'm looking at the most recent one.
Which section are you in?
I am in section. Um, I think it's probably point one one one. Sorry, I'm looking at an older version that I wrote notes on.
Is is it the ridge line section?
It's the ridge line section.
It's up on the screen.
Oh, it's one two zero.
Yeah.
Okay, um, no development uh including utility infrastructure may break the horizon line. It said, you've changed it. The number two, it says um action by the planning commission?
Yes, that was eliminated uh at the re- uh uh again, there uh we met with the foothill committee. There are some some of those with uh some of those on that committee have some legal background. And they suggested uh that that we should not make the planning commission the body that would be the
Okay.
updating those.
That's what I was worried about, because I don't know who's eventually going to be given that responsibility, but kind of like what Mr. Howard was saying, is the designation that we that we do every time someone comes to us with a proposal? Or is it um, is it something that accompanies that map that, you know, that we can somehow this ridge line, this is a ridge line, so that it's not case by case? I I I don't know what direction to go with that, so that was.
Uh, number, well, you can see what I proposed in number three, and that is to to do that, the rezoning. Of a, of an individual.
If we do a map, isn't that the rezoning? Are you talking about land that isn't already annexed into the city coming then?
Uh it'd be at the time, uh at the time a property's rezoned to to be developed. That's that's what the proposal is um.
What about the properties that are already zoned for appropriate development? If somebody wanted to build a house and then R one design could they, you know, they don't have to be rezoned. So how do we, how do we define ridge line in the middle of that process?
I guess the the intent there was to only um was to have ridge lines uh be applicable at the time of of new, at at when new development uh, new developments came in. That that that's a good point. I'm not sure that there are big sections of the foothills that could be developed without some type of rezoning, but the 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 thought there was is that uh a lot of the, there is a a large section of this uh this CH zone that's already developed. And I was not my, I I did not anticipate having the city designate ridge lines through those areas.
The only R one, the on, only R one zoning I can think of in that area is Phase Two of a subdivision that's already been approved. That Phase Two hasn't been built because it's having trouble with some uh infrastructure issues. Um there's some agricultural zoning, but I'm not aware of any R one zoning.
Well, this is a slightly different question, but that that makes me think of it. If if there's redevelopment in an area that's already, that's within this, this proposed CH overlay, are they subject to what they are, were subject to the first time they were developed, or are, is the redevelopment subject to these new restrictions?
To the new restrictions.
Okay.
To the current uh requirements in the code.
That could just be problematic if, like, for example, Mr. Howard said one of the other, you know, prominent homes that's already technically on a ridge line, depending on how we define it. If that house needed to be rebuilt, they wouldn't be able to build it where it is, depending on how we define it. So that's where that can be problematic, is we don't have some sort of already predetermined line noted.
Then maybe, they may be able to take advantage of the the non-complying provision, the non-complying structure provisions in in the land use ordinance we or in the, in the uh Pro City Code Title fourteen.
Yeah, that's a complex question, because if one of those homes were to catch fire and burn, yes, we would allow it to be rebuilt in its current, in that location, under the non-conforming regulations.
So I'm just looking for problem areas where it might be a loophole that would be difficult to to work through in the future. And so I don't want us to create loopholes that we have to figure out later.
Yeah, at the same time, it's hard to anticipate all of the possibilities.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, thank you. That was answering my question about ridge line.
I had one question about the detention basin design, which is section fourteen thirty-three A one ten.
Uh huh.
Uh about line two eighty-two. Um, part D of that, this this reads just fine. It it looks like it's a good um, a good regulation. On part D, do you want to require fires, fire safe or native type vegetation for landscaping around those retention basins? Or detention basins?
Um, so fire safe, you said?
Or fire resist.
Fire resistant. I don't think that's a bad idea. I I think that that could be a we could certainly add some type of language in there that would.
Um, you're talking about hillside development?
Right, if we're talking about hillside development, I could definitely see the value of of uh requiring some drought tolerant or or fire resistant vegetation.
Right. And I I really like your um examples of the right way, you know, depicting what the ordinance is intended to convey. So for example, under the the basins uh, detention basins, you have the the good example of what's permitted and the example that's not permitted. Um, I think those are great to sort of further exemplify what you're trying to get across. It might be good to put a little caption under each one, so like for the one for detention basins, free form basin with naturalistic native planting, some, you know, just something sort of descriptive. So it makes it really clear what you're trying to depict there. Um as opposed to the one that has just the the mown grass, unnatural basin with no naturalistic plantings. You know, there's a stark difference between the two, but sometimes it doesn't hurt to just spell it out.
Thank you. That that is a concept we took from the Sully County ZF cause, the
Yeah.
the pictorial examples of what's permitted and what's not.
Yeah, I think it's very effective.
I think your objective, you stated earlier, was that they they wouldn't have to maintain those detention basins too. Isn't that in the text? So saying so, an area that doesn't have to be maintained would help to describe that picture even better than the picture itself does. Isn't that what you were saying, Ms. Jensen?
Uh, well, they're, they're talking about, yes, it doesn't require heavy maintenance for the for the bad example, the not permitted.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't, where the the first one has, you know, natural appearing trees and shrubs around the detention basin, and then that one's just a mown lawn that obviously has to be maintained regularly.
And you also said, you know, fire resistant landscaping. Well, if it was natural grasses in the spring, when those detention basins are full of water, those grasses grow just like the hillsides do. And then when the water is gone, there's no, they dry out and they have something that's water resist, you know, that's water tolerant, but also drought resistant. It won't grow and require maintenance in order to keep it fireproof.
That's where maybe I, kind of requiring like na- native type of vegetation.
But even the native grows when it's springtime, so I don't know how you really define that.
Right.
You know, hillside vegetation is always a struggle. I live on a hillside. I've elected to keep the natural habitat, the grass and the sagebrush, but there's a fire hazard with that. On the other hand, if you plant all kinds of other things, uh it's a consumes a lot of water. And um if you leave your sprinklers on, you got problems with that, so.
Right.
There's.
Not right now. Um, I have a question.
Okay.
Um, how much ridge line has been identified in Provo? Um, if this, if this say were not passed, how much ridge line has been identified as having the potential of being developed?
I don't, I'm not aware of uh any effort by the city to identify ridge lines at a current or past.
I was just wondering if we're talking about a significant uh like three hundred homes potentially, or, you know, are we just looking at, you know, potential of like ten or twenty homes, just trying to kind of get a feel for it?
Well, what's currently zoned, uh the number's pretty low, like I would say less than fifty. What may come into the city in the future be annexed, or, you know, we just don't know. But there's just not um a lot of zoned property uh that would give the ability for very many houses. What would you think, Brandon?
Right, I would, I would agree with that. Um we can certainly dive into that. I I've got some maps that uh to pull up later. I can certainly pu- get, pull them open now if you'd like, but uh I I know that a- as far as the foothills go, a a lot of, a lot of what would go into this zone, it it has, has uh prob- has been developed. There is potential in the northeast for some development, but we we just haven't uh re, you know, evaluated the ridge lines there. And as you start going down on the south end of the valley or the south end of of the city, um it's it's interesting because the you, the, you've already got a bunch of development eh along the foothills, and then i- if you go much farther, the slope's getting pri- start getting pretty steep pretty quickly. And so it's, I don't see a lot of development potential on the south eh uh along uh, along the the the, along the foothills there. So there there's a little bit, but not a a lot, I'd say.
But I, but I think that that's crucial for the northeast section, that uh at least from my point of view, that um, you know, there, there aren't many property holders that that can develop that land, and I understand all the concerns pro and con for it. But uh there are people up there that own land that want to do something with it. And I think, I think you're gonna have to flesh out uh some of these um uh definitions so that they know uh what they might be able to develop.
That may be so. I I I wonder how how easy that's going to be without evaluating the ridge lines.
I, I, it's gonna be tough. I think you have to.
Yeah. And that that hasn't been cer- you know, we were tasked with this in the in the middle of the winter and and haven't had any ability to to address that, and um, but we we would need more time to to be able to do that.
I have a question on another section.
Okay.
Did I interrupt you, Deborah?
No, not at all. Go ahead.
Okay, um, section, uh, let's talk about fourteen thirty-three A one seventy, sensitive lands.
Okay.
Um, so it says that the requirements of of chapter fifteen sensitive lands needs to be met. My question is, who monitors or enforces this? Is there actually somebody? Maybe even the stream corridor and wetland protection? Is there actually somebody tromping around up there in the hills to make sure no one's breaking these rules? Or is this a, if somebody complains about it, how do we have this in here as a review and also monitor it?
You know, well, first of all, when they bring in their their development for approval, engineering goes through all of those standards and requirements as part of their development review. Then if there's something going on in the hillsides that appears incorrect or unpermitted, uh the citizens let us know really quickly about that. For example, we've got some excavation taking place in the mouth of the canyon right now. Uh that just came to light that the city's dealing with.
So you feel like the building inspectors or the engineers or anyone who goes on would be adequate oversight to make sure that these these rules were not being broken?
Well, I I I know you you put this question to me earlier, and I, when I evaluated that, one of the one of the thoughts I had is, I I think this is a really helpful ordinance, because it gives staff a reminder to to make sure that when we're reviewing applications, that it, that that it doesn't uh disturb or dredge or or uh alter a stream. Um I I think honestly, as a review of applications and app, a a requirement like that's really valuable, because it triggers me to think, oh, are they, are they altering a stream? I need to call Chuck Williamson at at the state, or um, you know, the the Public Works, uh it'll be a trigger for them. I think it's helpful. And then when we get a call from a, from a property owner and they say, hey, someone's dredging or or uh trying to build a bridge across the stream, we can say, yeah, we actually have an ordinance that says, hey, they they can't do that. And so I think it it's just another tool to help us uh pr- protect the stream corridors, frankly.
So I know that's not something that we can change, the language of the ordinance, but perhaps as you make your checklist of review, that that needs to be something that you actually think about. I don't know how you, how you do that checklist.
Well, frankly, like it, uh when I, when I review an application, and if it was in the CH zone, I'd just go line by line through the Well, frankly, like it, uh, when I, when I review an application and if it was in the CH zone, I'd just go line by line through the ordinance. And I'd come to this and say, I'd, I would actually probably consult with the public works department on this requirement.
Okay.
But the one major value of this and one reason why we're doing this and, and the way we're doing it as an overlay zone is once the rules are adopted and the map that Brandon's going to go through with you in a little bit is adopted and put on the ground, that sends a message to property owners and future property owners and developers that up in this hillside area, there are additional regulations that are going to apply if you want to try to develop. And it just puts everybody on notice that you've got some extra rules you have to live by. We're trying to make that as clear as we can. And by adopting the map, it actually gets it on the land. It doesn't change anybody's zoning. It doesn't give anybody any additional entitlement. But it gets put down on the city's maps. So people know they've got extra rules to live by.
I just always worry because there's a lot of those rules on the books, but it puts it on the citizens of Provo to rat on each other before the enforcement happens. So I don't want to create additional language in ordinance that is based on citizen enforcement. So which is difficult.
Yeah, when the city personnel sees something going on, we do something about it. But because the resident citizens live right in the area, they tend to see it before we do. And once they see it, they let us know.
Okay. Thank you.
One of the questions that was brought up by um a community letter was that um there have been situations where ephemeral streams have um existed, but development happened. And then it the homes that were developed were damaged and became uninhabitable or the property became unusable. Um, is that, how does this ordinance deal with that? Or is that some other part of the code?
David, Dave, do you want to answer that one?
Yeah, you're, you're probably talking about some of our areas that have uh saturated soils that uh tend to slide. Um, and, and I don't know how we, we would uh fix that with this ordinance. Um, that, that's just mainly a more of a geotechnical uh site and area specific study that would indicate whether that area would move or not. It, it's pretty hard to, to know that with this kind of ordinance and how to put it in there. But we do have really strong ordinances that people uh go and do thorough investigations of the site prior to developing. And, and a lot of that was put in place after we experienced the, the area that have potential to slide. And there was, like you say, homes that have been built and then condemned because the foundations are moving.
I had a comment about um maintaining public access to public lands.
Okay.
Um, I, I commend you for putting uh, putting language in here to require that access be maintained. Could we require access be created where it doesn't occur? Um, to increase public access to public lands?
We
I don't know. That's legally possible if it's considered too much of an exemption, but
I think that's challenging under the Nolan and Dolan uh Supreme Court cases. And certainly always our desire to get those types of uh added amenities. But there are some restrictions on, uh, there are some limitations on what cities can do in that regard.
Okay.
My intent was to, to steer away from those types of entanglements.
Well, I think it's great that we're, uh, we're encouraging that um, that public access be be maintained that where it exists.
I also liked uh the idea of adding, you know, if they're going to plat something that, that they that as they go through the, the process of plating and, and getting approved plans, that, that they act, that those public accesses are actually put on plans and plats so that it's, that information's more accessible to the public in the future.
Hmm. Absolutely.
Deborah, should we hear some public comments?
Uh, commissioners, where are we in our comments so far?
I prob- I want to talk about two more things. Just, do you want me to go ahead with those?
Go right ahead, Ms. Jensen.
Um, we've talked a lot about fire safety and I'm just wondering if there's some sort of a list of fire resistant varieties of trees that are supposed to be planted to replace the significant tree. And then the second part of fire safety was the issue that was brought up about the second access. The, just having it say that there's a cul-de-sac length requirement versus a trip counting versus a two accesses required. And I was wondering why you wouldn't want to have a second access in an area that's perhaps more at risk for fire danger than, than other areas of the city.
Okay. I'm going to go ta- try to tackle your first one for, uh, I'll go with your first one. Um, I would prefer honestly to uh just leave that up to the developer and, and their professional, their engineer or landscape architect to uh propose um trees that, that meet the requirements and then have uh staff, not necessarily uh me, but we have a city for- forester who could evaluate uh a document prepared by a professional. I would prefer to do that than rather establish a, a list of trees.
Would it be advantageous to at least say they should be fire resistant varieties or
I think
fire resistant?
I would, I think we've already got that. Uh, I think we've covered that in the, in subsection. Um, uh, in, in, uh, let's see, where are we? This one's so long. Um, one sixty-three.
What line number?
I, I think I'm going to one, five forty-one says this, um, all disturbed area shall be revegetated using native or water wise adapted plant species. Well, actually, good point. Uh, well.
It talks about water wise, but I don't remember reading something that said specifically take into account this is a fire area, you know?
Okay. So if you go to, in one sixty and subsection one D, uh, they, they have to, they, they have to put together a fire protection plan. If you go to four sixty-eight, kind of four through four thirty-seven. You, you, you ha- one of the things that I mentioned earlier is this try, we're trying to not only mesh with title fifteen and some of the engineering's uh requirements in that standard, but all, in that title, but also trying to mesh with uh the urban wildland interface code. And uh, there is a, a requirement uh in subsection D that says in order for the, that, that the applicant has to submit a copy of the approved fire protection plan. They have to go to the, to the, to the fire marshal. They have to submit a, a fire protection plan. I think it's noted even further on in the ordinance. Uh, that they have, that it's inserted in a couple of places where they have to work with the fire marshal to work out the details of, of having fire resistant plant, plants and vegetation.
Excellent. That sounds good.
On the issue of the at, second access, uh, just a couple of things there. Um, yes, on one hand, uh, more access can be seen as uh beneficial. On the other hand, more access brings the public up into the hillside and sometimes that can introduce uh fire danger. Uh, we had a member of our staff uh who went down on the fourth of July and was sitting right by the Y on the hillside to watch the fireworks. And there were quite a few other people there on the hillside watching fireworks. And he observed people uh watching fireworks who were waving around sprinklers, uh, uh, sparklers on the hillside last July fourth, when we were having, you know, real drought problems. Um, so bringing people to the hillsides can also introduce fire hazards. But I also, I talked to the fire department about this and we have in our process right now an eight lot subdivision uh that's beyond the one thousand foot uh linear measurement. Uh, the fire department's uh opinion of that situation was forcing a second access for eight lots was tremendous overkill to the point of being silly. Um, so to me, there's some balance there. And to me, the two hundred and fifty uh average daily trip rule is more environmentally sensitive than forcing in a second access for something like eight lots. Um, because that second access has its own environmental impacts. Every time you cut a road into a hillside, you can't get away from cuts and fills, which has a lot of impact. So that's the thinking behind it.
Would fire or engineering requirements, if it was a larger subdivision, automatically require that second access? So this just means not everyone automatically has to do it?
I'm sorry, ask that again?
So would other restrictions from engineering or the fire department automatically require a second access if the development was large enough?
Well, it depends on the standard you use. If we go by the one thousand foot length and if it's over a thousand feet, it has to have it. If we ride into this two hundred and fifty trips and that that will prevail in the hillside areas, then that would, that would be the trigger.
Okay.
Hey, could I, could I interject on that a little? Um, the two hundred and fifty vehicle trips uh would average out to be about twenty-two homes. So it gives you a little more perspective of, of what size of a development would trigger a second access.
But what Mr. Pepperoni is suggesting is that we just only allow two hundred and fifty trips and then they will only always need one access.
Right. What he is saying is that you could, uh, maximum scenario, you could have twenty-two homes on one access.
So that's what you would say we should keep it at as a, as a requirement? That was the change that discussed today?
Um, I, if I might note something, we had a discussion with public works on Monday. And uh, again, kind of hitting home on that idea that this is a, an ordinance to, to address aesthetics and kind of address the ecological health of the fi- the hillside. Uh, when we went through the street and access section, we found that a lot of that was kind of just regurgitating uh engineering requirements in title fifteen. And if you look at the news, uh, new um, the, the most updated version I sent you earlier today, it's uh, we eliminated a number of, of the, the provisions in the street and access section.
Okay, thank you.
But this is where that provision would be added if that's what the planning commission is comfortable recommending.
Do you have a line number where that would be added?
Three forty-eight.
Okay, thank you.
I had one comment on uh section fourteen thirty-three A one sixty on tree and vegetation protection.
Okay.
And this is just a general comment. There are a few places uh throughout that section that say this plan must be stamped by an engineer licensed in the state of Utah. And I think you could change that to say stamped by an engineer or landscape architect. Um, because you're talking about uh tree, tree planting plans, um grading and things of that nature.
That's part of the, the, the last word grading. That's part of the reason I, I, cause I kind of struggled with that a little bit. And then I, I, I worried about having an, a landscape architect commenting on, on a, on grading and, and those types of things was my concern.
Actually, I, I'd be comfortable with making that change because landscape architects get
Yeah, there's
education and their certification includes quite a bit of professionalism on the issue of grading.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're required to know how to do site planning and all of that. Do we um, on, on the areas where we're talking about revegetation or establishing new trees uh to replace what's been taken out or just for landscaping purposes, do we require an irrigation plan for new plantings? I see you're, you're talking about um, you're talking about plants that are low water, but even still to establish them, I think you'd have to have an irrigation plan of some sort, wouldn't you?
Good point. I don't think there was a, a, a requirement for irrigation put in there, but we can certainly insert that.
I think we should.
That makes a lot of sense.
I, I'm, I'm specifically looking under revegetation. So item three underneath that. Um, three point three.
Okay.
Uh, that's all I had on that section.
Thank you.
Hey, just as a follow up on that, um, so the, any, any structural grading would need to be a, a licensed engineer. And then any of the vegetation would be better off being the landscape architect.
Um, that, that was kind of what I was battling with. It's like, do we require, I mean, cause you like the doc, the revegetation, tree establishment and land reclamation plan seems like it might be advantageous to have both uh, uh, an architect and engineer looking at it.
And that, that would be a normal process, even on our, on our uh city projects. Uh, our engineering staff does all the structural type work and then we hire a landscape architect to, to uh provide all the details for planting and irrigation and such.
Is it too much to, to require it, it to be stamped by both then? Or is that?
No, that's what I
Okay.
Having both.
That, that makes sense.
You know, to clarify your drainage uh between ridge line and benches, you might even add some term like mesa. Just to, I'm just trying to, in my head, sort through those things.
Uh, uh, I'm sorry, I missed that. Uh, Ma- Mason?
Mesa, M E S A.
Mesa, okay, yes.
Yeah, cause, cause I think, you know, those are all three very, in my head, different things. And maybe that needs it, maybe not, but I'm just trying to, some would say, I live on a bench, some would say a mesa. I don't know if there there are concepts there that would be helpful.
Okay, no, we can look at that, that.
You could maybe call it prominence instead of a mesa, because maybe some people have an interpretation in their head of what a mesa is and that doesn't look right. It's not a flat freestanding rock in the desert. You just called it a hillside prominence, you know, then you
There you go. Yeah.
Interpretation.
Yeah, we can you can definitely look at that.
I have a question that's maybe just a nitpicking thing, but um in the section on limits of disturbance.
Okay.
There is a figure that's referred to and I don't see that figure anywhere.
Um, yes, I noted that and eliminated it. You can see it on the screen.
It's gone?
I, I
It only shows the first three pages.
What's that now?
You mean in the, in the section index?
Uh, limits of disturbance, if you're talking in subsection one, uh, the figure that's referenced there, I, I saw your comment and eliminated it. You can see it on the screen.
Okay.
Is what your screen is.
Yeah, my screen does, only shows the first three pages of the document.
It hasn't changed.
Oh, are you kidding me?
You keep saying that and we're like, okay, I'll just scroll through it, I guess.
I am sorry. I uh you were saying, cause we had a conversation earlier today about that and I thought we could overlay. That's kind of why we set the PowerPoint up the way we did was because we thought we could overlay the items on top of it. I am, I'm sorry.
Well, it just changed now, but it wasn't changed when you said that. Well, it just changed now, but it wasn't changed when you said that.
Can you see this now?
Yes, we see the terrorist retaining wall.
Okay, so you've crossed off the figure. That was my question, because I couldn't figure out what, what the picture that you were referring to there had anything to do with.
I am so sorry. I, that, that was my understanding is that you were seeing this document. I apologize.
Okay, that makes, that's, that was just a little thing I noticed didn't seem to be consistent, so that cleans that up.
It made perfect sense to Brandon and me.
Yeah, whatever.
I, I am so sorry. Yeah, that, we purposely set up the PowerPoint the way we did because we thought that we could overlay additional documents and give ourselves more flexibility in, in pulling up different documents through the meeting. So I apologize.
No worries. Thank you.
Yep.
Deborah Jensen, I, I think that takes care of my questions for staff.
Do we have any other questions for staff commissioners?
No.
Not at this time.
Pass.
Okay, then we will open it up to public comment. And again, public comment could either be submitted by typing questions into YouTube or by calling in. And those will be read back by staff. So first of all, I know we've received quite a few letters and emails from the public and I think we've addressed those comments tonight pretty well in our discussion and our questions with staff. There were quite a few received and we have read through all of those prior to the meeting or to the hearing. I know our neighborhood chair, Ms. Mehmet, submitted a very good critique of the document. And we appreciate those comments that she sent over that we've read through. Are there, Rachel, I guess I will defer to you. Do we have any neighborhood chairs who wanted to weigh in on this, this evening?
Okay, let me see. I did not have anything on the YouTube comments from neighborhood chair.
Okay.
I'm not seeing any notification on the phone calls that someone wants to make a comment.
Okay.
Let me double check on that. There is a little bit of a lag if they're watching on YouTube, so let's give them a minute.
If you want to go ahead and check for any comments from the general public as well, that's, that would be fine.
Deborah, do you want to reread those directions in case somebody's, because coming late to the meeting and trying to make comment?
Yes, that would be fine. Okay, these are the directions to participate in the public comment portion of the meeting. Please dial 669-219-2599. Then enter meeting ID 393441160, followed by the pound key. When asked for a participant ID, press pound again. Be sure to mute or silence any external audio on your end to reduce feedback. If you're viewing the live proceedings on YouTube, mute the YouTube video. You will be able to hear the meeting audio through the phone while you're on the line. Press star nine from your phone to indicate that you would like to speak. When invited to speak, the planning secretary will grant you speaking permission. Call in on you by the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by stating your first and last name and city of residence for the record. So if there's any members of the public who would like to participate, those are your directions for doing so, live while we're airing this. And we'll stand by for a couple of minutes and see if anyone has anything they would like to weigh in on.
From the YouTube comments, it looks like there's at least one person, maybe two.
Hello?
Hello?
Just let me know when I should speak. Sorry, I can't talk because my computer is muted.
And who is this?
This is Rachel Luke.
Are you, you're a public member who wants to make comment?
Correct.
Oh, great. Thank you. Sorry for the confusion. If you could just state your name and your city of residence for the record.
Okay, right now?
Yes, please.
Okay, my name's Rachel Luke and I live in Provo.
Great. And your comment?
Okay, so I have a few concerns about this proposed overlay. I only found out a few hours ago that my home is actually in this overlay. Across the street, my neighbor isn't, but I am. The borders seem kind of arbitrary. The map that was sent out with the staff report was not detailed at all. There were no streets labeled. It was difficult for me to ascertain whether I was even in the overlay or not. So my first concern is that those who will be in and impacted by this new overlay, they've not been properly noticed at all. We need better maps and we need information about how this impacts current homes and any future attempts to improve property. For instance, because of this new overlay, I have lost the ability to have any privacy because any new fence has to be through. And I happen to live next to a major home occupation. I want privacy. The impetus of this overlay is to preserve the foothills, but you're including sections of Provo that have been developed for decades. My own home was built in 1959. We're not preserving anything here with some of these sections of the overlay. You should be placing these restrictions on undeveloped land, not older sections of neighborhoods. When I spoke to Brandon Larson, his own admission to the email that I sent to him said that this will make redevelopment possibly more difficult and costly. And if there's one thing that the East Bench doesn't need, it's to make revitalization of older, more affordable sections of northeast neighborhoods more costly. Especially in an area with active fault lines and unreinforced brick masonry homes. We need to make it easier, not harder, to improve and even replace these homes. Some of the requirements, if I were to improve my home currently, are at complete odds with, with this overlay. Currently, if I build on my home or, or I rebuild it, I've been told that I have to install $20,000 worth of sidewalks because there are currently none. But if I'm in a critical hillside overlay, I also have to have a see-through fence and can't cut down any trees. So either we want to urbanize this area or we don't. It kind of feels like the city wants it both ways now. So I just have a lot of concerns. I'm also a neighborhood chair. I'm not speaking as a neighborhood chair, but I would really like to notify residents of my neighborhood that are in this overlay now, how it will impact their efforts to improve their property going forward. Thanks.
Great, thank you very much. And we will address any concerns we hear from the public tonight of following the public hearing section.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else on the line, Rachel?
Okay, 443, go ahead.
Hello, please state your name and, and city of residence for the record. Hello?
Hello, extension 443. Kay, are you on the line?
Hello, yes, I'm on the line.
Great, please state your name and city of residence before you start with your comments.
Okay, my name is Kay Nelson and I live in Provo. And I just want to say what a great job you guys are doing under crazy circumstances. Wow. Kudos to all of you. I'm calling to comment on agenda item number one. I know a lot of time and effort has been put into this critical hillside overlay zone document. And I want to lend my support to this document. I know that there might be details to still iron out. But the gist of the document is such that it will protect the remaining foothills of Provo. Hopefully, in a way that we will still have the beautiful views and access to the trails and nature areas that so many people enjoy. And I'm, I'm glad that it's an overlay because the, the other codes that will play a part in it talk about sensitive land and fault lines and geotech issues and other things to consider, but I just want to say, I think this is a good thing for Provo. It's going to be valuable for us now and into the future for, for people to have the Provo foothills. I do have two things in from, I had a bunch of questions and I sent them to Mr. Pepperoni and some of them I got answered and others I didn't, but two, two of them, one was about the height of the retaining walls. The, there was a height restriction that Public Works took out, but I think there should be a height restriction. I just don't think that there, I think it might be an eyesore, even if they use the same, you know, color of materials. So maybe there should be a height limit on that. And also it mentioned in, in the document that a builder could use vinyl fences. And I think vinyl fences would be pretty awful up in a natural area. I think there were, there are natural things that you could use for fences if you needed to do that. So those are, those are my comments. Thank you so much for, for letting me comment this way.
Great, thank you so much, Ms. Nelson. We appreciate it.
Okay, bye bye.
Bye bye.
Okay, we don't see any more comments from the phone and the only YouTube comment I had was from Kay Nelson about the height, the retaining wall height, which, which she addressed in her phone and comments. So I don't have. Oh wait, I have someone that's on hold. So let me double check. There is a lag on the YouTube.
Okay.
Hello?
Okay, I, seven, okay, I think it's Barbara?
Yeah, right here, 7751.
Yeah, you're on the line.
Hi.
All right, Barbara, please state your full name and your city of residence for the record before
Sure, sure. My full name, Barbara Lipinski, and I live in Provo.
Great, and you're
Am I good, sorry?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to quickly point out, and Rachel might have covered some of this, but I want to point out maybe some of the unintended consequences of this overlay and exists in, in conjunction with
Hello?
Hi, I keep telling I'm muted and unmuted. Can you guys hear me?
Now we can.
Okay, wonderful. Do I need to start over? Did you hear me?
We heard the first sentence, yes.
Okay, perfect. So just wanted to point out some maybe unintended consequences of this overlay as it pertains to existing homes. And I'll give you kind of an example. In our situation, we live in about a 50-year-old home in the Rock Canyon neighborhood. And we've invested quite a bit of energy and time into plans to expand our home in what we think will really improve the property, beautify the lot, bring value to the neighborhood. And under this new overlay, I don't think we could do any of the things we have planned. For instance, we have about a dozen scrub oaks, scrub oaks in our front yard that apparently we would not be able to take out in order to expand without re-treating. And I don't know unless we can replace those with a smaller tree like a bonsai for a scrub oak. I don't think we'd be able to do that. So we would basically be out of luck in trying to improve an aging home. I really, really don't like the fact that inherent in this and by Brandon's own words that he said today, this will make renovating or improving our properties more costly and more difficult. And I just don't see why we would want to do that. I don't understand why existing houses that are 50 years old need to have a see-through fence. I think that that, this stuff doesn't make any sense when we have, when we live so close to people. If we were to put in new fences, that they would have to be see-through. I, I can see why this applies to new developments. But I think that existing homes, especially ones that are trying to improve their neighborhoods, should be exempt from this. And I think this kind of seems like a, I know you've been working on this a long time. I guess if it's since the gravel pit time, it has been a while, but it seems like maybe a disproportionate response to penalize existing residents and just make things more difficult and costly for us. So I would request that you exempt existing homes and remodel from this overlay. And that's it.
All right, thank you so much. We appreciate your comments tonight.
You bet.
Ms. Bray?
299, go ahead. Steve Turley, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, go ahead.
Please state your name and city of residence for the record, please.
I am Steve Turley and I'm a resident of Provo.
Great, thank you. Mr. Turley?
Again, thank you for what you're doing, working under these difficult circumstances, but thanks for your, thanks for your efforts for the good of our community. I, I just want to say that I own three properties that are within or, or actually are, are east of this proposed critical hillside overlay zone. All three of these were used for mining or had some kind of a gravel extraction on it in the, in the far distant past. And, and much of my development efforts are contingent on being able to clean up these sites by doing some kind of reclamation. And, and while we of course want to comply with all the good ideas that are expressed in this, in this overlay zone, some of this, some of these hillsides are scarred and, and without some kind of incentive to develop or to incentive to reclaim these areas, it won't happen. And I'll just give you an example. The scarring that exists on the hillside in the Slate Canyon area, they go up to an elevation of 5,150 feet, which is significantly, of course, above the 4875 line. And yet, and yet that area has been delineated as, as no development whatsoever. The reason why I, I hope that there's some kind of consideration for some kind of carve out is development doesn't always happen in one area. And then there's supplemental uses that, like a debris basin or a rockfall protection. Birmingham areas that can be put in to actually enhance what's going on, enhance public safety. For the purposes of, of development, those are supplemental too, and, and the development would be contingent on that happening. And so I hope there's some kind of carve out, some kind of provision for, you know, development services director or some kind of engineering consideration to be given for this kind of stuff. Otherwise, those, those properties will sit. Again, I want to be a team player with the city and I want to do the right thing. And I, so much of what's in this overlay zone is, is good. And, and, and I have every intention on, on, on doing good things on those properties. I'm just afraid that, that some of this is, is, is simply too difficult and will actually be a disincentive. The other thing is, is, and I want to, I want to echo the sentiments by others, that the elevation of 2875 is arbitrary. If you get into the south portions of the, of the city, those lines are, are the magenta line and the green line are zigzagging across each other and I, I'm left scratching my head trying to figure out what to do where, but I, I would hope that there's instead of a one-size-fits-all solution at 2875, rather there should be a determination to go parcel by parcel and to say, what do we want? You know, as city mothers and fathers, what do we want to have happen parcel by parcel? It shouldn't be too tough. Some of the comments that have been made before about already developed areas, I don't think those are the, the areas that we're trying to carve out. The next point is, is that prohibit, that prohibition in, in that proposed 14.01.085 that, that east of the proposed zone, there would be no permitted activities. That's, that's significantly restrictive. It didn't take too long to, in asking the opinion of professionals, that, that that creates the opportunity or creates the unfortunate circumstance of, of illegal takings, which is of course expensive. unfortunate circumstance of illegal takings, which is of course expensive and reckless. If we were to take into consideration, I hope 14.08.060 about prior lots created, those lots, lots have rights. And, and to, and to this overlay taking precedence over some of those, those other existing laws are, they're very difficult. They can make those areas east of the proposed overlay zone, make them comply with the, with the overlay zone, and you get the same result. But to say to prohibit and permit any activity, I think is creating a lot of problems. I'll just try to be quick on these last two points. In the discussion in the staff report, page two of item two, there was a discussion about 4875 was picked because it's the, it's the line that where the city can adequate deliver, deliver watery, I'm sorry, can adequately deliver water services and water pressure. That, I take issue with that. The city has a water tank at the elevation of 5,600 feet, over 700 feet higher than that, than that line that was, that was set out. So again, I think that parcel by parcel is, is a little bit more prudent. Finally, over and over again tonight, we've heard, you know, the, that in spite of the staff's best efforts to know about all the unintended consequences, we've just heard over and over them say that the staff hasn't evaluated ridge lines, the staff hasn't evaluated what to do in some of these populated areas. And that ambiguity screams that, that we need to take more time to get this right. And so it may not be the right time and/or operating under some pretty difficult circumstances, but I hope that there will be the opportunity to, to tap the brakes on this a little bit and consider some of these other things. Again, I'll end where I began. And I have 100 acres of property, three different areas, that are, that are scarred. And, and those, and some of these development restrictions will, will be the disincentive for us to do what I think is right for our community, and that's to clean those things up. So again, many thanks for your, for your hard efforts during this time. But thanks for your consideration. We'll, we'll cheer you on to do the right thing for the community.
Steve, don't get off. Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Thank you. I'm attempting to more clearly answer a question Ms. Lisa Jensen asked earlier in the meeting. She asked about current zoning that was, is within the mapped area. And the map has been amended to include your land ownership on the south side down by Slate Canyon. So if I seem to recall you having some R110 zoned property down on the south side of the city, is that correct?
That's correct. There's a, the entire ownership we have is-
How many acres do you have in R110?
All the parcels that we have are 60 acres, but the zoning kind of slices it. So call it 35 acres that are zoned R110. The balance of the, the acres, the remaining 25 acres would be the steep hillsides, which, which are scarred from the old, from the old mining activity decades ago. But to answer your question, about 35 of the 60 acres are zoned R110 currently.
So Ms. Jensen, I had forgotten about that when you asked that question. I just wanted to clarify that. And then pertaining to Mr. Turley's issue about a regulatory taking, we do not want to put the city in a position where they would be accused of regulatory taking. And so we've tried to take steps to avoid that with the recent changes that have been made to the map. But Mr. Turley is correct. If we've created that situation, we need to correct that and fix that.
Might I also point out that there was a provision in an earlier draft that, that said that anything east of, of the CH zone would, would be prohibited from commercial and residential and other types of development. That, that provision has been stricken. It is, is no longer proposed.
Great, thank you.
Commissioners, we have some YouTube comments.
Great.
The first one is from Lance Heidrich of the Rock Canyon neighborhood. He asks, could we think about a distinction between for developers looking to develop multiple lots versus people trying to build on one lot? And then we also have a question from Sharon Mehmet. She is wondering, did they address why the map stops where it does on the east side and not taken possible future land incorporation to the east? And that's all the YouTube comments I have for right now. But again, there's a lag, so we might want to wait a minute.
Okay. Do we want to put the timer up for a cutoff for public comment or?
I'm asking on YouTube if there's any other comments or any phone-in questions that we're missing. And I'm, I'm not seeing any reply right now.
Well, we can give it a couple of minutes and then close, close this part of the hearing on item one to public comment and let staff respond to some of the comments we heard. That sounds agreeable to everyone?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, there was another comment from Sharon Mehmet. Is there a way to distinguish in this CH between home improvements and someone buying up multiple lots and building large developments up the hillside?
What's your opinion about the vinyl fences? I like the vinyl fences.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other comments coming through. So I think we might be done with public comments.
Okay, thank you very much, Rachel. All right, at this time, we will close this portion of item one to public comment. And I will ask staff to address any of those concerns they heard expressed during the public comments section.
So the last comment by Sharon Mehmet kind of echoes a couple other comments made by different people regarding existing houses or existing lots. It's not unusual in our zones in the zoning ordinance to say a lot that was created prior to such and such a date, gives a specific date, aren't subject to the provisions of this zone. Perhaps it would be well for us to add something like that in this ordinance. I agree with the sentiment that we should be making it more difficult and more expensive for an existing house to simply remodel or even rebuild. So I would suggest that we put something in this code along those same lines that will have, would have a date certain that either when the lot was created or a date by which a home was built. If you're before that date, then the provisions of the ordinance wouldn't apply. We would go and look at the housing stock and try to kind of get an idea of when the homes were built and see if we come up with a date that would seem to serve that purpose. That's what I would suggest.
Any comments, commissioners?
Would there be any problem doing that as this year, before 2020? Would you want to go back a certain number of years?
Yeah, it would be like having been built before September 1st of 1985. It would be a date like that.
What about that lady who made the comment, however, that she wanted to put up a fence and hadn't done it yet? What if her house is newer than 85, but she doesn't have a fence up? Would she be subject to those?
That's what I'm saying. We would go back and we would look at those, the houses tend to be built in periods. We would go and kind of inventory the houses, which we can do pretty easily by county records. And we would come up with a date that seems to fit the neighborhoods. And if then, once we come up with that date, it would, it would apply to fencing and anything else. Then they would be exempt from this ordinance.
That's a good idea.
But if they have a newer home, they would still be out of luck if they didn't, for example, already have a fence built?
Yeah, if we did it by date of home, that's true. If we did it by date of creation of the lot, perhaps it wouldn't.
Okay.
Probably the date of lot is safer because sometimes you will have this one outlier lot in a neighborhood that didn't get built until 20 years after all the other homes. So perhaps create a date that coincides with creation of a lot, which is what we tend to do in the other zones, would be better.
Okay, I didn't understand. That's what you were saying. I think it was based on the house.
I was talking about, there's two alternatives there. We could look at either one.
I like that lot idea.
I do too, lot.
And I like the idea of allowing some flexibility for the existing lots or for existing homes. But at the same time, I'd like to have some language in there that says that to the extent that the spirit of this particular ordinance can be respected by new development or redevelopment, the city would encourage that.
Okay.
I like that too. Because you don't want somebody to just go in and go crazy just because they have a lot in the middle of it and they can do whatever they want with it.
Right.
On the issue of why didn't we take the line further to the east and kind of what's the thinking on that? One issue we'd kind of like to avoid in the future is Public Works has raised this concern several times, where, you know, right now, just east of the city, east of private ownership, we have a whole lot of federal land. And what we'd like to do is not be faced with a situation in the future where somebody has had some kind of trade with the Forest Service or with the federal government. And five years from now, we have a big piece of property that's in private ownership that's been in federal ownership prior to that. We, we'd really like to see if we can head off further private ownership up the hillside and further development requests continually east up the hillside. Do you understand what I mean? Was I clear in what I'm trying to express?
No. So explain that to me again, please.
So right now, we have a lot of federal land that's on the east bench of the city, correct?
Right.
So people always have the opportunity to go to the Forest Service and say, hey, I'll trade you a piece of property in some other area for that property that you own just east of Provo. And if the Forest Service agrees to that, what has been federal land for years and years and years is now all of a sudden it's privately owned. That gives us private ownership even further up the hillside than we now have. We would kind of like to try to head off getting development requests on those parcels. We'd kind of like to somehow express the idea that what's in federal land now, Provo City doesn't anticipate ever entertaining development requests on that property. And if by some means, private ownership is obtained on those federal lands, the city really is going to look with a jaundiced eye at approving developments further east than what is now private ownership. Was that more clear?
So how does this ordinance stop them from trying to develop that private land?
Well, that was why we had the original language in there about not issuing building permits for commercial or residential in there. That's exactly why that language was in there. That language was taken out because of these concerns about a regulatory taking. But I think the idea of trying to limit future private ownership further up the hillside is something we should continue to try to, to head off in some way.
Can you use the same sort of language, something that says property that is in federal possession as of January 1st of 2020 is ineligible?
I think looking at some type of language like that would be helpful, yes, Mr. Orgaga.
What about land that's owned by the county?
I don't think we have any county ownership. We've got Provo City ownership and we've got federal ownership. I don't think we even have any state ownership. We have county islands. We have county areas, private ownership within the county, but we don't have any, we don't have any Utah county-owned land.
Okay, I, I was referring to the private ownership within the county. That's what I was thinking of.
Could you, David, Dave, would you like to address the issue that Mr. Turley raised about the water supply? Or water tank locations or?
Yes, we, we do have the ability to supply water higher than the elevation that was stipulated on the map. But in, in the area where we see the most pressure for development in that northeast section of the city, that is the line at which we can deliver water. Further south, we can go quite a bit higher. And so we may want to look at that and adjust things accordingly. But I think the map that you're looking at was the first shot at it and is subject to editing.
Any questions for Mr. Day, commissioners?
If we were to recommend approval to the city council as is, when would that map be edited? The, the first caller that we had said that her house falls within the map, but the person who lives across the street from her, their house does not. And so she was suggesting that a more specific map be submitted so that, not only so that they understand exactly where they fall within the map, but so that more people that fall within the map understand that they would be counted within this ordinance, would fall within this ordinance.
Well, what we were thinking or what we were proposing was that if we put that language in the ordinance, it says if your lot was created prior to this date, the ordinance doesn't apply. We thought that would circumvent the need to now go back and try to edit the map further. I think there is a most recent version. It sounds like people aren't aware of that. My impression is that Mr. Turley wasn't aware of it because it was amended to include his property. But the idea of putting that language in there was to keep us from having to go back and try to do further edits to the map, especially doing one parcel by parcel in the area where Rachel Luke lives, I think would be difficult because it's, I think she's in a pretty standard kind of R18, R110 development, if I remember her neighborhood correctly.
Is it wrong to say that we've gotten enough feedback that warrants the, maybe another draft being done with, with the considerations that have been discussed here for representing? I, my thought is that there are enough refinements that we probably ought to look at again. I think we're headed in the right direction, but that's, that's what's on my mind.
If the planning commission wants to look at it again, that'd be fine. We would really need to do a special meeting with the planning commission one week from tonight in order to get this in front of the city council before their last meeting in April.
Wow.
Right.
Have you lived? In either case.
Because your next meeting is on the 22nd and their last meeting of the month is on the 21st. So we'd have to hold a special meeting of the planning commission one week from tonight.
Yeah, I'm honestly, I, I think, I think we're further along, but I think there's so many unanswered questions that I, I don't know that even if we did that, we could make I think, I think we're further along, but I think there's so many unanswered questions that I, I don't know that even if we did that, we could make it.
Well, I'm, I'm, I've, I've made some notes about the topics that have come up. There were some language tweaks that I think we could all deliver to staff by editing uh, our copies of the document. Um, the map is item two, so that's a separate issue. So in terms of this, I, I think we could make a motion this evening and just stipulate some of the things that we'd like to be addressed, things like uh, previously created lots dating to, you know, a date to be specified by development services, uh, this overlay zone will not apply to. I mean, that was the biggest one I heard tonight.
Mr. Larson and I have tried to keep notes on your comments and we have a good idea. We have quite a list of edits that we think we should make. And we'd be happy to take any edits that you want to send into us. But uh, I think it would be helpful if we could move this on to city council with those edits that we've made. I think the city council realizes that uh, we may need to come back in the fairly near future and do some amending. Further amending.
I have a question about two items that were mentioned by people who made.
Yeah, go ahead.
One of them said vinyl fences being the only option um, was cost, or well, would be ugly, I think was the comment, that it wouldn't mesh with the natural environment. And when I read that, I thought similarly, I think that that's probably because of fire safety rules, that you don't want to have something that's vulnerable. Does anybody?
Well, it's not unusual in hillside areas for there, there to be regulations for fencing that's going to kind of blend in to the environment. So a lot of cities will allow like a vinyl coated chain link because that tends to disappear in a hillside environment. What Mr. Larson was thinking when he wrote that was right in the mouth of Provo Canyon, there's the Pay Ranch that has a uh, like split rail, a very ag-looking fence, vinyl fence. Um, and in that environment, that seemed to be very fitting. So that's the struggle is contained within this hillside area. We've got some kind of farm areas that uh, ag fence like the Pays have, seems very fitting and appropriate. We have other areas like the development that you saw on the annexation, you know, uh, I'm sorry, it wasn't an annexation, but the development you saw in the hillside up in the mouth of the canyon uh, a month or two ago, and, and a development that far east, the vinyl fencing probably wouldn't be very attractive, uh, like Ms. Nelson was suggesting.
And then her other concern was retaining wall height. Those were the two things that she said we didn't address that she felt needed to be in. If we're making notes, do we want to decide what we like or don't like about those ideas if there's going to be an amendment made on that ordinance?
So a direction from the planning commission would be helpful on that. We did have the uh, retaining wall height limitations in the previous version. We took that out of the most recent version. Uh, any input the city, the planning commission may want to give on that issue would be welcome.
Because I agree with that comment. That was what we were talking about at the beginning, when you compare it to that giant wall on 4800 North versus something that has terraces. I think if you're trying to make it blend in, you don't want it to be a giant wall.
Yeah, I think the current language says you have to terrace it. We would not allow that giant wall. The current language says.
She just wants more specific height, maybe?
Yeah, I think she would like a specific height maximum.
So why did you take out the maximum height from the previous draft?
Because Public Works, uh, that was the recommendation from Public Works. David, would you like to talk about that?
Yeah, so it, it wasn't to make things uglier. We were just talking about the ramification, perracing, and that the footprint of any thing that uh, would require perracing would require a bigger footprint and more impact on the hillside area. So instead of, instead of doing a vertical wall that maybe it's a gabion basket that kind of blends in and you'll, you'll see those kind of walls at like uh, Beaver Valley Girls Camp going up along that steep slope. They have probably 50-foot walls there that you could hardly even see from the valley because they blend in. But those are vertical walls. But it, it's kind of up to you. If you want a bigger, wider footprint and have the perracing, that's fine. We are just worried about having a, a wider footprint than we need to have there.
Planning agreed with Public Works' opinion on that.
It's good to know the purpose is the footprint and not necessarily the aesthetics.
Yeah.
Um, I have a question about something that um, Mrs. Luke brought up. Um, she said that uh, she has several trees in her front yard that uh, uh, if this ordinance was passed, that she would not be able to take out uh, if they did a remodel um, without having to replace them. And um, I guess, you know, depending on the size of your lot, you know, if you had 10 trees, but you're in a R110 uh, sized lot, then, you know, 10 trees uh, in your front yard can be a lot. But if you're uh, further up in the canyon, you've got a much bigger lot. Um, 10 trees isn't so many. Uh, so how does that affect somebody who's in, say, Indian Hills versus somebody who's maybe up in Vivian Park?
Yeah, that's uh, that, that's, it's a challenging, I think it's challenging for any existing parcel. Um, the requirement says you can't include more than 40 uh, percent of your lot in the limits, limits of disturbance. And so it, it really does um, make it challenging to, to work around uh, to, to, to only be able to work, uh, disrupt 40% of your lot. I mean, you take in the house and, and then you, you don't have a lot left to, to, to work with on the rest of your property. So whether you're in Indian Hills or, or in, Vivian Park's not in our jurisdiction, but uh, another more forested area, that it'd be a challenge regardless, I think.
Doesn't that go back to a previously created lot from a certain date would not?
Right, yeah, exactly.
Back to that issue.
Yep, that would be, be ameliorated through that.
Yeah, okay.
But somebody in a newer, say, one that was built, you know, in 2010, then that could create a problem for them?
Yeah, uh, it, it definitely, it definitely could be a challenge. I, what, staff's open to suggestions to opening that dis, that limits of disturbance percentage to, to more than 40% if, if the, if, if the planning commission feels like that's uh, advisable.
I don't know that I have an answer. I'm just trying to understand how it, how it impacts the people that live up there.
Well, it's, it impacts them in that they only have 40% of their land to play with. They, they, you take the house out, you take, include the house in that 40% and you've only got, oh, I don't know, 10, 15% left to, to disturb in your landscaping. The rest you have to leave in natural vegetation. In a, in a tr- traditional sized lot. If you have a bigger lot, then obviously you'd, you'd have a lot more room to play with.
But only if their lot was platted after the date that we had established the ordinance.
Right, right. So, I think we've heard everyone's concerns on this one. Um, do you feel comfortable? Does anyone feel comfortable making any kind of a motion, whether it's to recommend approval with conditions on it? You know, we've talked about the retaining walls and then determining whether a lot falls under the regulations by when it was created. I think those are the two biggest ones.
And if you make a recommendation uh, or a motion, I think um, the motion could be subject to uh, changes being made that reflect the concerns raised in the meeting or directions you've given us. I don't think you need to feel compelled to try to elaborate on every change you want us to make. I think we've taken notes on those things and have a good idea of what you want.
Because even if we established exactly what we wanted to change, the city council, and we recommended it for approval, they could completely ignore our recommendations and do whatever they want anyway, correct?
That's correct.
So I feel like if we, we've sort of sifted through the concerns, we've tried to point out the ones that were most important. And if we make a recommendation based on those concerns, then we've given it to them in the best condition we can hope for.
Right, yeah.
Yes, if you do have a recommendation on a uh, exception for prior created lots, I think it would be good for you to tell us that. If you do have feelings about the uh, thousand-foot dead end versus trip generation, it would be nice to have your recommendation on that. Otherwise, I think we've got a good idea of the changes we should make based on the discussion.
I do worry about the, the trip generation because I feel like it's 22 homes really don't just generate 250 trips. I know that's the model, but I, that was on the low end.
So, so the point is before they can chew on it, we have to uh, send it to them. I mean, uh, wow. Well, hmm, I see.
Another option you have is to recommend denial because you have these concerns. And then the staff can try to address those concerns the best we can, and we'll take that to city council.
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying. I, I, I appreciate where you're in, what position you're in. I, I don't think it's quite ready, but you have such a time crunch to get it up there. I understand that you need them to chew on it.
Right.
So, Bill, what would be um, staff's recommendation for a potential date that uh, that you would put in for the, for the homes? Um.
Um, again, we would go back and look at the uh, subdivisions themselves, the development that's taken place and try to get a date on that, but we would probably um, bring that date more current uh, rather than trying to get it really exact from 20 years ago or something like that. We would try, we would try to err on the side of um, leniency towards platted lots. Because I think what we're trying to, what we're really trying to address is undeveloped land. That's really what we're trying to get at with this, more so than redevelopment of existing lots.
Right.
But it'd be impossible for me to just throw a date out off the top of my head. We need to go back and do some research. But since this is going to city council next Tuesday, we get that research done before they see it. No, I'm sorry, when's their next meeting?
Uh, did they say something about April 15th?
Yes, the 15th.
Yeah, it's April 15th.
The next meeting's the 15th.
So two weeks. Still, that's.
Yeah, municipal council is meeting April 14th.
Oh, yes, 14th, okay.
And then again on the 21st?
Yes.
That is correct.
Which is why the only possibility for your next meeting would be, well, I guess.
Was there, did they express some type of concern about having to get it done by April 14th? I just.
No, they just need to, the city council needs it before then by the 21st.
Okay.
So I guess we could do a city council meeting on the 15th, but you also have a meeting on the 22nd. So that would give you consecutive me- meetings, you know, the.
You mean a planning commission meeting on the 15th?
Right.
I feel comfortable recommending it as long as we can verbally delineate what we're, our concerns are.
I also feel comfortable recommending it um, with the understanding that staff will um, incorporate the concerns that have been brought up at this meeting.
I agree.
Did you want us to give you specific recommendation for those two things you mentioned? Which I think was the 250 trips versus 1,000 feet and then the age of the lots?
Yes. And then also, if their next meeting is then until the 14th, we could get these changes made and get this back up to planning commission for you to at least have reviewed it before it hits city council.
Um, if we make comments, is that adequate? If you get revision to us and then we return that to you with comments?
Oh, we would need to present those comments to the city council. At that point, you couldn't make more changes. But if you had more changes you wanted to make or suggestions, Mr. Larson could make sure the city council's aware of that when this moves on.
I think that's what Laurie was saying, right?
I think so. I mean, I'm not entirely sure. I was just wondering if our commentary would make it to city council.
Yes.
And we can certainly send any comments we have as of today to you in a chance of making.
That would be welcome.
Great.
But we can't really make a recommendation as to the date, um, because you need to research that, right?
Right, you would say that planning commission recommends that we, the staff insert some type of prior created lot date that would grant leniency to those lots platted prior to that date.
It's what he said.
Or even a grand exception for this ordinance for lots created prior to that date.
Right.
And then do we have a consensus on the 250 trips versus 1,000 feet cul-de-sac?
I do prefer the trips. Um, I'm wondering if there are and I'm thinking that 22 homes um, and one exit in the case of a fire is kind of a lot. So maybe it needs to be a smaller number of trips, but I'd prefer the trips to the length of the road.
Uh, that'd be fine. 200 trips?
Maybe we could forget about trips and just say a number of units.
You could do that too.
Is there, do you have a preference as far as what's a safer wording?
To me, if you did units 10 or 12, makes sense because to me 10 or 12 is more like the 250 number.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I'm more comfortable with that too. I'd say 12. Could easily work with one exit. More than that might be an issue.
Sounds like we may be ready to make a motion. Should anyone want to take a snap? Ms. Johnson?
All right. I would like to make a motion that we recommend item number one for approval. Item number one reads, Provo City Council Office requests an ordinance amendment to establish the critical hillside overlay zone to provide development standards to help protect the sensitive hillside areas of Provo City's east. And then along with that, we would say our recommendation is along with a list of concerns that would like, we'd like to be addressed before it's presented to the council.
So one of those concerns would be a prior created lots date.
Yes, which you, which staff would determine based on looking at other lots or when the lots were platted.
Number two would be cul-de-sac length based on a maximum of 12 homes rather than 1,000 feet.
Yes, or a number of trips.
Okay.
And then the other list that we trust staff has taken notes of. Is that specific enough?
Yes.
I, I'd like, I'd like ridge lines to be clearly defined and provo benches to be defined so that people have a um, reasonable expectation on how they can develop their land.
Okay.
All right, shall I try to restate that?
No, we've got it, Deborah.
Okay, thank you.
We need a second though.
Who is the second?
Ms. Urquaga?
Yes.
Great, thank you. All right, all those in favor forwarding a positive recommendation to municipal council on item one, and I'll go through roll call to make this easier. So, Mr. Howard?
With reluctance, yes.
Ms. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Knidson?
Yes.
Ms. Urquaga?
Yes.
And Ms. Wynton?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well on Ms. Jensen. So that's unanimous. We'll forward a positive recommendation on item one with the conditions as so read into the record. All right, so item two is also legislative, so we'll make a recommendation on item two. Provo City Council requests a zone map amendment to include multiple east bench properties in the critical hillside CH overlay zone. Citywide application. And Mr. Larson can walk us through the map.
Very good. Okay, just pulling up the, okay, pulling up the PowerPoint here. So we've, we've talked a little bit about the, the map so far. What we did, again, this was, sorry, this is a very loose mouse here.
Are you able to see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, so we, this was actually really difficult to try to, to pin this down, try to pin down the areas. We talked with Salt Lake County to try to see how they pinned down their foothill area. They, they had Wasatch Boulevard, or they, they had a road that they could use on one end that kind of seemed to stretch the, the length of their jurisdiction, and we really didn't have anything like that. So we, we just tried to identify some lines or elevations that we could use to try to, to be as objective as we could. Elevation 487 seemed to be a good elevation because of its relationship to the providing of water. Also, so that, originally that was kind of our intent to use that on the west end and on the east end, the, the line that divides public and private property, but as we get on the south end, it, it starts kind of crossing and going back over the, over the top of each other. So it was a challenge. So we just basically determined that anything between those lines would be in that, in that zone. There was a point, and I'll identify that on the map, where we, in, in, in going through the Utah State Hospital property, we had, we couldn't use the private-public land line. So we, we identified a, a line that seemed to, to work. That, the, the problem with that is we didn't want, we didn't want to include the Utah State Hospital property in its entirety in the CH zone because it goes up the hill quite a ways. And then I guess just as a side note, the approximate number of acres in the, in the CH zone would be about 717, 120 acres all along the east bench. So this is just kind of a broad bird's eye view of, of what the, the area looks like. I think in earlier, earlier version, I'll, I'll note, had included some land in, in these areas right here. They were taken out because they were, they're not in, in Provo City. So you see that the, you can see the blue, or the kind of greenish-blue line is that, that elevation 4875. And then the, the more pinkish-purple magenta color is, is that private-public land line there. It is definitely wider on the northeast end of the, of the city. So what I've done here is I'm, I've kind of zoomed in at a bird's eye view of this. I've thrown some streets on there so you can get a better idea of where, where this lies. So you can see this at the north half, and then I'll, I'll take you to the, the south half. Again, very heavy on the, on the north side of the, of the city. And then as I go to the south, it, it, it tapers off quite a bit. So now I'm going to give you a, a view from, from Google Earth, a, a, a series of, of slides that, that kind of show this from maybe a little easier, gives you a little better perspective. I'm going to start, I'm going to start on the north end at the mouth of the canyon and run south. This is at the mouth of the canyon. A number of acres there, closer to the Squaw Peak Road. And there, there's the gravel pit, you know? The Orem property, I believe, is right here. The Orem property was excluded. There's a, oddly enough, we found, it was identified that Orem City actually owns some property, or has some property in their jurisdiction on the, on the, what we thought was the Provo City side of the canyon, and it lies right in this area. And again, do you confirm you can see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So right in this area, Orem City property, so it was excluded from, from the map. Now we're heading a little further south, and you can see this is Provo, Provo City land right at the mouth of the canyon. The Bob Jones property is in this area, Smith property that we've heard a little bit about. This is all county jurisdiction here.
Okay, question for you on this. The proposed TARA development is not part of this, but it is adjacent to it, is it not?
Correct, yes. We, we can include that, that TARA property. Well, most of the, some of what, you, you had a meeting a, a couple of months ago, and there was some, I think, some discussion of a, a proposal, and it, and it did lie in, in this area. And it's, most of that land's the county. There is a little bit of, of Jones-owned property in the city, and I think it actually lies in the next slide. I think it would lie more in this area here.
Okay. Is the ordinance clear enough that if additional land were annexed, it would be clear which land would be considered governed by the overlay?
We talked about that in the foothill committee on Tuesday morning, and we believe there'll be a follow-up application to address that. A general plan amendment and text and ordinance amendment.
Thank you.
Yep. So now you can see the Sherwood Hills area as we run to the south. And then, of course, on the north, there, there's just a little piece of, of Provo in, kind of in the middle of, of county land there. So just running further south, this is definitely an area where there's a lot of existing development. And definitely would probably benefit from a, a prior lot provision as, as with this as well. The Rock Canyon area, I believe Ms., Mrs. Luke, who, who chimed in earlier today, was, is in this general area here, as well as Mr. Heidrich in, in this general area. So running down, and, and I'll note that there is some private land right here, but it's not in our jurisdiction. So we, we've tried to include every private parcel that we could identify that, that was within the city. It's, it's been included in, in this overlay.
What, what kind of private land? Is it on forest land, or what does that mean?
No, there's, there's a, I can't remember the ownership, but there are, there are owners that are, you know, not the cit, not the city or the forest, they're just private owners.
From the county?
They're, they are in the county jurisdiction, but they are owned privately.
Got it.
So now, in order to include all of the private property, you, you see this big jump up the mountain on the east here. That, that's the, the farthest east private ownership that we have. And, and I don't know if we, you know, love having that up that far up the mountain, but it's, it is privately owned.
But the, the kind of safety valve on this is that the overlay zone isn't changing anybody's zoning. It's just saying that if the city zones you for development, then these rules are going to apply to you.
Right, this person is certainly not in a residential zone. So this is, here's the, right in here is where the, the state hospital is. And so then we started, as I noted earlier, started, we, we had to use, wanted to use a, a different elevation instead of the, the private-public dividing line there. And so this, right in this area, I believe, is, actually is elevation 4750. And so you can see that. There was, there was a Provo City parcel that, that was, that was left on the, within the CH zone boundaries because there, there is an intent by the city, I guess, to potentially sell that for development in the future. So that was included. As I run further south here, Mr. Turley called in and is concerned about his property being east of, of the CH zone boundary. And, and we have since revised the map and all privately-owned property that was here on the south end has been included. There were, I think, three different property owners, and they, they were all included in this area. So that is, that is the end of my slides. And again, this really is kind of our first stab at how to, on, on where to lay this, this zone out. It, it's actually, has been quite challenging to identify where to, that, there just weren't real natural boundaries to, to, to use. We, we would, we, we had thought to use the Bonneville Shoreline Trail as kind of an eastern line, but considering our time constraints, that wasn't practical. But this is, this is what we've proposed, and we, we definitely would appreciate your feedback, so.
Great. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Larson on the map?
I have a few. We've used the 4875 as our line because that's the realistic height for water in at least the northern area. So if you can't pump water in most cases above that line, how is it possible to have development above that line?
People would have to build more infrastructure, another tank.
Okay, so that's with current infrastructure is what that's based on?
Yes.
Okay, and then
Did I get that right? Anything you want to add to that?
That's right. On the, on that north end, where the, the development pressure, right where you're showing now, that's the highest elevation we can go without building additional tanks and pipes and such. So further south, we're already above that, but this was the, the, kind of the whole idea of this zone was to protect the remaining area, and, and this is by far the biggest area.
Okay. My second question is about property that is at 4750 where the state mental hospital boundaries are. I understand you're doing that because the property goes so high up the mountain, but what if in the future there were no mental hospital and the property was sold? Is that not important to deal with right now because at that point it would be rezoned and annexed or whatever?
Yeah, and the other thing is, the, the other property goes so far up, it honestly didn't seem like a, a, a property that was desirable for development.
Okay, I just want to make sure that wasn't something that would possibly be a problem if it changed ownership.
I had a question about the area further south. You've got, like, at the bottom, yes, so there's the housing development, and then it looks like there's quite a slope, and then you've got another block of blue to the east of it. And I'm wondering why that slope in between does not, can, that area that you're marking, yeah?
Yeah, I, I noticed that as well. I had the same question. It, it didn't fit with the parameters we used. We tried to stick with tho, those two lines, and they, they just don't fit. But again, this is really just kind of a, a first stab at this and, and if, I mean, I, I honestly seems like an area that would probably fit well in the CH zone.
It sort of seems to me that, that the CH is not only those specific areas, but it, it is also defined by the slope and the fact that it is a hillside. So that, it would make sense to me to include those areas as well.
Yeah, I, that, I definitely had of any other area along here, that, that caught my eye for sure.
That was also my concern. There's a lot of land that's south of the tree streets that is undeveloped yet on the hillside. And even though it might not be above that elevation marker, it still could come forward as a possible development that you maybe would want to be subject to these rules. Right where your cursor is, that was another one. Not anymore.
Right in this area here?
Yeah, below that, to the left. And then further south, there were more of those areas that could easily be developed. So the east, you know, southeast, the mental hospital there where all that empty land is, I don't know who owns it.
Right.
Further south from where your cursor is.
Oh.
Yeah.
In between Slate Canyon Drive and the, and the, the green line.
Yeah.
A bit of land there.
Yeah, I can see that.
And I know east of that green line, the, the mountain does get very, very steep down there. So I think you were right in saying that it's not suitable for development, or very unlikely to be.
Right.
I was wondering about the, just east of the, there's a housing development just directly north of Seven Peaks. And
I don't think I can
Seven Peaks is just north of the hospital.
Yeah.
Yeah, the housing development, it's just north of them. The east, they're built there on the foothills, but just east of them, that area is very, I don't know if it's a 30% slope or not, but it's very steep up through there.
Right.
And so I don't know if that meets your criteria or not, but I, I, you'll probably go back through and look at some of these areas again that have been mentioned, but I was, I was wondering about that area.
Yeah, I mean, all through this area, there, there seems to be a lot of land that, that could be potentially, you know, you could consider that as land that maybe you want to have in that, at this zone, but.
And some of it, you know, you want to preserve it for its natural beauty, but some of it too, it's a safety issue.
Right. That makes sense.
Any other questions for staff commissioners? Mr. Howard?
No, I said none at the moment.
Okay. If we don't have any other questions right now, do we have anyone? Do we have any neighborhood chairs or members of the public who have weighed in on this, Rachel? Or waiting to Or waiting to speak to it?
I do have Sharon Mehmet has some comments. She says, why not include all privately owned property and Provo city owned in this map, whether in the city or the county? So it is understood what the city's intention would be if it is ever brought in. And she also says um that, that she would probably add the parts of Provo city east and up the canyon near Big Springs.
And that's the only, only comment we have so far?
The only one so far, let me wait a little bit. I will ask if there's more comments.
Steph, while we're waiting, did you want to comment on?
Yeah, again, um in meeting with the Hillside Committee and uh Gary McGinn was also included, is also on that committee. Uh, we felt like it was a better idea to amend general plan language and the ordinance. And then also, we, we also want other ordinance amendments that address that exact issue, that that's the place to put language that says property that may in the future be annexed, which will be subject to these regulations.
Okay. That makes sense.
But if that's the case, do you want to delineate that on a map first so they know what properties you're referring to?
No, we just want to say any property that may be annexed on the hillside, on the bench, however, however we want to describe it, will be subject to these regulations.
Okay. So we don't need to say east of the current area or?
Well, when they say that, we may use language like that, yes.
Okay. I think that would be a good idea to address that concern.
Okay.
Uh, one of the comments uh that was, was why not go up the canyon to Big Springs, but that's, that's up South Fork. We do have Provo City Park and a bunch of our uh main water infrastructure up there, but uh tha- that's not inside Provo's uh boundaries.
And it's not in our policy declaration forever being in our boundary, is it David?
No, no.
Any other public uh comments, Rachel?
Hey, I'm, I'm asking for comments on YouTube. I'm not seeing any, um, I'm not seeing any on the phones waiting to be heard. Let's just give them about fifteen seconds and see if any pop up.
All right.
Okay, I'm not seeing any more comments.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, we'll close item two, the public comment then, and I'll turn it back over to the commissioners for any other questions for staff or um motion? Discussion? Ms. Wynton?
This is Rachel Brain. Can I interrupt for a second?
Yes.
There was another comment by Sharon Mehmet that said, but I didn't hear that mentioned in adding to item one.
Hear what mentioned?
I'm, let me ask her what she was referring to.
Perhaps the map? I'm not sure.
Giving her a minute to type her reply. She means the language for future intention.
Yep. Staff doesn't believe we need a planning commission motion to tell us to do what we've told you we're going to do.
For the general plan amendment, correct?
Right, right. That's section fifteen point seventeen of the ordinance.
Okay. So we'll better address it through the general plan amendment?
Yes.
Any other comments or questions for staff commissioners?
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Ms. Wynton?
Uh, I propose that we forward with a positive recommendation to the city council, item number two. Um, the Provo City Council Office requests a zone map amendment to include multiple bench properties in the critical hillside overlay zone.
Thank you, Ms. Wynton. Do we have a second for Ms. Wynton's motion?
Actually, I have a concern with it as stated.
Please go ahead.
I would add to that, that we that would be conditional upon considering those other areas that are undeveloped and still on the hillside that we pointed out as we were discussing it with Mr. Carson. Is that appropriate to recommend that?
Ms. Wynton, did you want to include?
I don't have a problem with that. I thought you were asking staff.
Yeah, I was.
Okay.
Pat Brody, you want to weigh in on that?
I was just gonna say, and uh I just, and trying to come up with these to try to objectively uh do that is, is just a challenge and that's part of the reason why we didn't add it. I, I suppose we could try to find an elevation that seems to, to be you know, kind of have a common elevation among those parcels. It's just trying to, trying to, trying to, to be, do this objectively is difficult.
Because otherwise it looks like you're being property specific and that's more like a taking.
Uh, yeah, spot zoning, I.
Okay.
I'm just wondering if rather than saying an elevation, it could be a slope um within a particular geographic area?
I was thinking the same, but then you've got some areas that are sloped in the middle of the city, so.
That, you know, we, we thought about that. We had toyed around with a lot of different ideas. Slope's challenging too because there are, if you use slope, that might subject some areas of, of the city that you may not, that, that you might not intend. Um, like even just uh like the Grand View area.
Yeah.
That area is already plotted and so it would be excluded by your date.
Yep.
But once again, if the intent is to protect the view and the natural environment, then Grand View wouldn't be as critical because it's not the hillside per se.
But it, it does overlook, I mean, there are a few places in Grand View that overlook um the lake. And uh, I mean, most of those I have been built out, but the last time I drove through there, I think there were like one or two lots that don't have anything on them. Now, maybe the, maybe one of the houses next to that lot owns that lot. Um, I don't know, but.
I don't feel like that meets the purpose of this overlay is supposed to do where it's more of a natural hillside environment as opposed to just a high spot.
Yeah, I, I think you could say something like of a particular slope and east of nine hundred east or some other street. So that you did have a little bit broader definition of the map?
Yeah, we, we looked at a road and there just wasn't a consistent road that ran the length of the city to use. I mean, I know nine hundred south, uh, I think nine hundred south would go to, nine hundred east would go too far. Too, too far to the west.
Right.
Some things, well, um, you seem to have been able to draw a line for fireworks, so it, it, yeah, there ought to be something similar.
But maybe for that fireworks line, they can be property specific and it's not a problem?
Yeah.
One thought I had, if um if I could, while we are sitting here is uh I, I thought about maybe trying to fi- identify an elevation that would start somewhere in this area. And instead of using forty-eight seventy-five, try to find uh somewhere, try to transition to a different elevation right in this area.
Because if we're going to put language in that protects the previous development, then that shouldn't make more people angry. It should just provide more of the protection to the hillside that we're hoping to provide. I like that idea.
Yes.
It would certainly encompass the, the areas that have been raised by um commissioners as areas of concern.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
So how?
So I could, oh, go ahead.
I'm just wondering how I would word that in a motion.
Go ahead. Sorry, I was just gonna say with the recommendation that staff um consider additional um defining language to include undeveloped property east of Provo that is not currently included. And I don't think I could even restate that myself.
All right. I'll give this, I'll give this another shot here.
All right.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's what you want to say because that was what they said they were going to address in the general plan amendment. We just want to say choosing a lower elevation line as our, for where the hillside starts. Is that correct, Mr. Larson?
Yes, I, I'm trying to think of a road where we could say, or kind of a general area where we could say based on right there, what is?
What is this road here? Does anybody know?
Is that Oak?
Zoom in. Can you zoom in?
We can't. These are screenshots.
Let's see.
Can you zoom in on your screenshot?
Is that like eight fifty north?
Oh, this is so touchy.
It, it's the road, I think I'm seeing Locust Lane and it's where Locust Lane ends.
Let's uh, let me go here and see if this helps at all.
Yeah, that one. So it's just east of center. Eleven twenty, fourteen twenty east?
I think Laura's right. I think it was up towards the south end of the tree streets.
Yeah, I think it's that, um, I think you could see Locust Lane and it's that eight twenty north or something.
Uh, one that comes down from, yeah.
Yes, yeah, that, that's right. That's right.
From the white.
You think it was right right here?
Yeah, somewhere around there.
So about nine thirty east perhaps?
I think it was.
Yeah, maybe that's it.
That's nine thirty north though.
Nine thirty north, sorry.
Yeah, nine thirty north.
I think that is pretty much the south border of the tree streets.
Yeah.
All right, so what uh east is that?
So.
Looks like it's fourteen twenty.
Yeah, about fourteen fifty, fourteen twenty?
Uh, well, that takes you up, up past uh that takes you up almost past the tree streets.
Um.
If, I'm looking at fourteen thirty. And that's, that's way up here.
Well, they're just saying at nine, at nine thirty north and fourteen twenty east. That's about where they would start that line.
And then continue south to city limits?
Wouldn't it be better to just do an overlay with a topographical map and choose an elevation? I liked that idea.
Yeah.
I don't know.
That's the street.
Yeah, it's, it's, it looks like it's eight twenty north, so maybe starting with an elevation at the intersection of Oak, what is that? Oak, Oakmont Lane and eight twenty north start with a different elevation right in this area. Can you, can you see that map?
I don't see it personally though.
Roughly.
Uh, yeah.
I don't see you pointing at anything.
I see eight twenty north. And uh.
You don't see Oakmont.
Do you see this?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, right in this area, I think, is where we'd want to start, perhaps with a new elevation.
Okay.
There we go.
Yeah.
All right.
I truthfully tried to do that before I sent it to you and had, had a difficult time with it, but I'm, what, but with the, the idea of having the prior created lot provision, I think that'll make it more, uh, more doable, so.
Yeah.
I understand you correctly. What you're directing us to do is to move the west elevation line to the west to where Brandon is pointing, correct?
Yes, and then continue that on down.
Okay.
So what you're saying, Brandon, is that you would find the elevation at that corner there and then have that be your new elevation line that continues?
To, to, to try to take in some of those other eastern properties. Eastern hillside properties, yes.
Are you gonna make me have to try to say this?
You could just say I moved that we do that as Brandon explained.
Okay. I move, we do it.
Oh, boy.
The motion is to move the west elevation boundary to the west to the corner of, or approximate corner of eight twenty north and Oakmont Lane.
Oakmont Lane.
Starting at that location.
South.
Yep.
At the same elevation.
Yeah, transitioning from forty-seven, forty-eight seventy-five to a new elevation at that intersection.
And then continuing south to the southern city limit?
Yes, southern, yeah, to the southern city limits.
Yes.
That, that elevation may fluctuate. I've just been looking at the topography and there, there's some pretty clear definitions of where that slope stops. And I think we can pick that out and draw that uh pretty clearly. So hopefully you can trust us to do that.
As long as you can do it in a way that doesn't seem like you're picking on somebody, right?
Right.
That's a good solution.
Not to be arbitrary and capricious.
Right. But just to take in those areas that, that were areas of concern.
So did you want to say, Maria, that uh you just wanted to add to your motion on item two?
Yes.
Condition?
Yeah, do you want me to restate the motion?
You don't have to restate the whole motion. Just add the condition.
So, yeah, so um to include the condition um to move the western uh elevation boundary to start at the corner of Oakmont Lane and approximately eight twenty east, no, eight north. And continue south to the Provo city limits.
Great. Does that need to be restated, Steph?
Nope.
Great. Do we have a second for Ms. Wynton's motion?
I can second.
Seconded by Ms. Urquaga. All right, we'll take a vote then. All those in favor afford any positive recommendation on item two, the municipal council stated by Ms. Wynton's motion and seconded by Ms. Urquaga. Mr. Howard?
Hi.
Ms. Jensen?
Hi.
Mr. Knitson?
He might have gone.
All right, Ms. Urquaga?
Aye.
Ms. Wynton?
Aye.
And Ms. Jensen, myself, aye. So that's unanimous. We will forward a positive recommendation on item two.
Mr. Knitson is, Mr. Knitson's back. At least his icon shows up on there.
Yeah. Yeah. It keeps cutting in and cutting out.
Oh, sorry.
It's good for a while, then it goes bad.
Yeah, I see you appeared here. Mr. Knitson, we were voting on making a positive recommendation. I'm sorry?
I got that part and I, I'm in favor.
Great. So that is unanimous for a positive recommendation on item two. All right, commissioners, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Urquaga to adjourn, second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Knitson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Nice job, Deborah and, and, uh, staff.
Thank you everyone for participating.
Thank you, guys.